... hereby given, uh, city of, notice hereby given that the City Council of the City of Alpine, Texas will hold a regular meeting at 5:30 PM on Tuesday, March 3rd, 2020, in the Civic Center, 801 West Island in the City of Alpine, Texas. For the purpose of considering the attacks agenda, the notice is posted pursuant to Texas law for meeting Act, Section 5.1.043, Texas Government Code. Public Notice, the use of cellular phones are prohibited in the City Council chambers during the meeting of the City Council. Members of the audience will be provided an opportunity to address the council on any agenda item after determined of the form and football numbers of the meeting. Remember, free march will be limited to a total of three minutes per person. Please write your name on the list so we may call you in order. Please speak into the microphone located in the calling system, your name and address. You have petition or other information pertaining to your subject, please present it to the City Secretary. State law generally prohibits the council from discussing or taking any action on any issue not included on the agenda, but if appropriate, the council may schedule a topic for future discussion or refer the matter to staff. No personal attacks on council members or city staff will be allowed. The mayor and/or City Council members may call a point to order to stop the personal attacks. If an individual continues to personally attack electric official or staff member, immediately may be barred. Call this point to order will have the invocation by name of the resident transit.
Dear wise and loving Father, thank you on behalf of all who are gathered here today. Thank you for our many and abundant blessings. Thank you for life itself, for the measure of health we need to fulfill our callings, for sustenance and for friendship. Thank you for the ability to be involved in useful work and for the honor of bearing appropriate responsibilities. In the scriptures, you have said that citizens ought to obey the governing authorities, since you have established those very authorities to promote peace and honor and justice. Therefore, we pray for our mayor, for our city manager, for the various levels of city officials, and in particular, for this assembled council. We are asking that you would graciously grant them wisdom to govern amid the conflicting interests and issues of our times, a sense of the welfare and true needs of our people, a keen thirst for justice and righteousness, confidence in what is good and fitting, the ability to work together in harmony even when there is honest disagreement, personal peace in their lives, and joy in their task. We pray for the agenda set before them today. Grant your assurance of what would please you and what would benefit those who live and work in and around our beloved city of Alpine. It is in your most blessed name we pray. Amen.
Pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On your behalf, I pledge my allegiance to the Texas State of God, one nation under God.
Thank you very much. Mr. Secretary, would you have more?
Mayor, we do have a forum and the notice was posted at 2:00 AM on February 28th, 2020.
Okay, thank you very much. Any public comments? Any public comments? Seeing none, then we'll go ahead and move to presentations and recognitions. First one I have is a certificate of recognition for Megan Andrew.
She can make it.
Just a second.
Certificate of achievement, Megan Andrew, finance director. In recognition that your accomplishments are successfully attaining your certificate, certified public fund investment manager, signed this third day of March 2020, and Res Ramos, Mayor of the City of Alpine, Texas. Congratulations. A proclamation proclaiming March 2020 as the 18th annual March of Meals Month, whereas on March 22nd, 1972, President Nixon signed into law a measure that amended the old American Act of 1965 and established a national nutrition program for seniors 60 years and older. And whereas Meals on Wheels, America has established the March of Meals campaign in March 2020 to recognize the historic month, the importance of older Americans' act nutrition programs for both congregate and home delivery and raise awareness about escalating problems for senior hunger in America. And whereas the 2020 Observance of March for Meals on Wheels celebrates 18 years of providing an opportunity to support Meals on Wheels program that delivered vital and critical services by donating volunteers and raising awareness about senior hunger and isolation. And whereas Meals on Wheels program, both congregate and home delivered in Alpine, Texas, may serve our community admirably for more than 41 years. And whereas volunteers of Meals on Wheels program in Alpine, Texas are in the backbone of the program and they do not deliver, they not only deliver nutritious meals into seniors and individuals with disabilities and are significant risk of hunger and isolation, but also care and concern and attention to their welfare. And whereas Meals on Wheels program in Alpine, Texas provides nutritionist meals to seniors throughout the Alpine that help them maintain their health and independence, thereby preventing unnecessary falls, hospitalizations, and/or premature institut- institute- institute- that's word, got time taken. Institutionization. And whereas March, whereas Meals on Wheels program in Alpine, Texas provide a powerful socialization opportunity for millions of seniors to help combat this negative health effects and economic consequences of loneliness and isolation. And whereas Meals on Wheels program in Alpine, Texas deserves recognition for the contributions they have made and will continue to make to local communities, our state, and our nation. Now, therefore, I, Res Ramos, Mayor of Alpine, Texas, do hereby proclaim March 2020 as the 18th annual March of Meals Month and urge every citizen to take this month to honor our Meals on Wheels programs. The seniors they serve and the volunteers who care for them, our recognition of and involvement in the National 2020 March of Meals can enrich our entire community and help combat senior hunger and isolation in America. I, Res Ramos, Mayor of the City of Alpine, Texas. Is there anybody from the Meals on Wheels here? And now we'll go on to reports. I don't have a report. City manager?
City attorney?
None, city attorney.
City attorney.
Hi, Eric Council. I'm Eddie Allen. I have a few updates. Uh, the previous city manager, Jessica Verza, had filed an application for unemployment benefits. We have been corresponding with the Texas Workforce Commission that the contract that she had with us, that applied with by the city, that she received six months compensation for service contract, and that she received notice prior to termination of issues with her performance, as noted by numerous, there were half a dozen City Council meetings that we sent minutes of to reflect that. So, uh, we're mainly trying to back and see what they're doing there. Uh, we've worked with the Texas Workforce Commission when employees file for unemployment. Ms. Zimber and I continue to talk on the development ongoing at Let Your Gear Roads. Uh, as we mentioned at the last meeting, we're going to have sort of a punch list to give to them of items that we want to make sure that they're satisfied the city with before that we begin with picking back to the city, to make sure that the easements and the roads and things of that nature are taken care of outside of the city. Uh, so we're continuing to allow them on that issue. Uh, completed with Councilor Curry's request of redrasting the animal control ordinance. And, uh, we've followed a lot of the guidance from her and her committee. They have it in the handsout, I'll send, we've, uh, committee meeting next Tuesday night. We'll go over the proposed changes and I'll get their feedback and make sure that everything that they want in the proposed ordinance is included, that, uh, we have to make some changes that have been following state law because there's a lot of state law, uh, issues that also apply to channel control. Uh, we, uh, keeping Pacific Railroad ordinance is now final, and I'll go through a protocol with, uh, city manager and police chief on how to give out tickets and what we'll do to thank those tickets for. So, let's start working on that. And this report continues to work well. I had just mentioned last time, we're going to have a, uh, a warrant roundup. We'll put a notice out in paper first and see if people want to come pay their tickets before more is allowed. We're going to do this periodically, probably three or four times a year, so that we both increase collections and reduce the backlog of this report. This report's functioning very well. Any questions?
Because we're on Let Your Gear, what are the big issues that have to get worked and what need to be focused on?
Uh, I'd say the big, one of the big issues is the, uh, making sure that the Let Your Gear Road developers can provide us, uh, an easement, proof of an easement on the road, not just to say that there is an easement, but to show them that all the easement holders have agreed to it. So, uh, there's been a little back and forth, as if they want us to do that work for them. That's where the city's job, the city's job is to make sure developers comply with our development rules to do that. Other than that, it's going to be to make sure that the things like drainage and the road, the construction of the road, things of that nature are not according to city standards.
It can't be that hard to police, but she's going down and looking at all that. Records, all the stuff up.
Right.
Thank you.
Thank you, Allison.
Thanks, sir.
Okay, Susan Andrew, report. Sir, Honorable Mayor of the City Council, uh, wanted to start off with another good news story. Chief Martin is on vacation this week, uh, but regardless of that, his department has received two additional donations, $1,250 for purchase of Taser and another $1,200 for purchase, uh, of outer carry of bulletproof vests by Mr. Michael Lozzi. Um, you know, and the importance here is, as we reach out to different community-minded people that want to support law enforcement, welcoming those types of donations, help us offset, uh, and improve, really more than anything, help us improve our, uh, law enforcement teams. Marcy will talk a little bit this evening about some of the grants that we're working on to help supplement that group as well. Human Resources, really wanted to shape up this part of the, the city manager report this evening to look at, at two different piece parts here. One is, is training of our staff and the other is, is how that impacts turnover. Um, and, and so I've got a few slides queued up. I had asked the team to look back at what have we done since October 1st of this year? Uh, what they produced was actually a very impressive list. Uh, you know, I, I will start off by saying that, you know, leadership training we've been doing every month with our department heads and supervisors has been very successful. Uh, we've been very positive feedback. And then as we, we peel down from there, Cynthia has, has been very assertive in her training, uh, Geo on her team. Of course, these slides will be put up on, uh, website after today. Um, you know, and then, and then we move forward into David Hale's team. You know, as we've talked about getting Tony, Tony Catani on his team through code enforcement training. Um, and then of course, David, uh, continuing, although he's seasoned and very intelligent, there's, there's a lot of continuing education units that he's got to go out and see to make sure that we're current, we're serving the citizens of Alpine well. Uh, the logo at the bottom there is the IQ Works software that, uh, we're deploying. Uh, there's quite a bit of training around that, how we use that and better interact with, with the community there. Law enforcement, what a great several months, not only taking classes, uh, you know, here, here in Alpine and outside of Alpine and in the region, but also doing quite a bit of online training. All of these steps are important so that our staff, uh, is, is really versed on current things that are going on out there, they're keeping sharp on their skills, and a very impressive list of, of what our PD's done. And then we move forward into our public utilities and we, we've seen several of our team members here receiving certificates, uh, for completion of various licensing. And as we look at the right side of this list, you see the hours, uh, training that they're also going through. Just super important when we think about utilities, water, wastewater, our gas, uh, fourth measures that are, that our citizens in the community are concerned about. Uh, also safety, how we work out in the field, are we mindful of slips, trips, falls, things of that nature too. Finance, you know, a couple of things here, customer service training, customer service training, customer service training. Uh, if you work up in that front, I give a lot of credit to Diana and Susan and Stephanie. They really take a lot of, uh, that frontline communication. And if a citizen comes in and they're frustrated about their water bill, uh, or they're frustrated about something, you know, how do you make sure you listen to that frustration and reflect back, uh, something positive, uh, to, to the citizen? So, also working through things like remote capture, uh, so that we get, uh, we don't have to run back and forth to bank all the time. Also just a variety of different cash handling, uh, procedures and policies that we're going to be working on. Of course, we saw Megan's certification, uh, that didn't just come from, from thin air, she spent quite a bit of time preparing herself, uh, for the testing for that too. Um, so why do we like to talk, talk about training? Why do we like to talk about employee development? Uh, it really ties into our turnover and something that we're really looking at on the administration side is where are we in employee turnover? We know that, uh, this year so far, we've, we've turned 10 employees, that gives us a run rate of about 24. Uh, the last two years, the city sequentially turned 33 and 36. Longer term goal of keeping our turnover at less than 20. Certainly job satisfaction and knowing, uh, how to do my job and am I doing it effectively out there is, is very important and intrigued, creating a culture and the environment where we're always want to come into. We certainly see, uh, a real direct correlation there, so something we'll continue to track and look at, uh, from the city administration side. Uh, you know, moving forward, as we go around the community, we see a lot of the, the work and the activity that's being done with sidewalks and creeks and, uh, Old Ringo's doing quite of their work. And just had a chance to reflect back on the vision plan from 2017 and said, what were those key items that we called out in the vision plan as a city? Uh, you know, developing that long-range strategy and plan to redevelop and re, revitalize the downtown district, creating a well-defined historic district. Uh, Mr. Rawls Williams will be here this evening to talk a little bit about that as well. Uh, developing an art center, special events center in downtown district to help expand tourism, enhance our pedestrian activity and access in the downtown district by improving sidewalks and street crossings, uh, in the alleyways, uh, developing additional parking options, uh, developing that linear park along Alpine Creek and increasing the lodging accommodations in the downtown district. So there were certainly more action items called out in the, in the city vision plan, but these were ones that were more pertinent to, to what's going on downtown right now. Uh, I did include in the bottom the flyover in the vision plan itself, some links, so that when this goes up on, on the website, uh, tomorrow, those that want to click on it, watch it fly over again and look at that full, close to 100-page document of the vision plan. And so when we think about that and then we look at some of these projects, like on the left, the three slides or the three pictures there, the creek work that Eddie's had his team doing, and it's simply creating that, that open space down there, clearing out so that we can better think through, uh, how will our citizens use the creeks? And what is the best way to create walking paths and linear connectivity to the different parks and the different areas of town? So really hats off to Eddie in getting that, uh, that canvas cleaned so that we could, uh, work, work towards the future vision. Sidewalks, you know, we, we got very, uh, aggressive with some of our paving projects back in 2016, 17. You remember, uh, that created a water flow issue on 4th Street, Colin on the sidewalk there. So we've gone back and modified that. If you, uh, in that area, you'll see the work, uh, in that sidewalk going in. Uh, all with the idea of creating that, that ecosystem downtown, uh, that's inviting for people to walk in the business and into our Alpine. Uh, you know, one of the other items in, in the vision plan was creating more room space downtown. So you've got Old Ringo who's putting 16 or 17 units downtown. A couple of pictures are the, the work on each side are the work that we're doing with them to put in the water tap for fire suppression system. Uh, but we, we look forward to really realizing some of the, the fruits of the labor that Danny and Monica have done and having more room space downtown. Any questions on that, the vision plan in downtown area? Cause it's something that we get a lot of feedback in City Hall and we're out and about quite a bit, so.
You got a question about the Old Ringo's thing? All of those motorcycles that have altered mufflers violate the noise statute on the city charter. So what's going to be done about the noise when they have 17 of those things running down there, downtown?
Right, so.
And then parking is also going to be an issue now.
The, uh, I'll, I'll address the parking piece of it first. Uh, you know, certainly parking, when we think about, um, whether it's a short-term rental, or it's a hotel, or it's a new business, there are certain requirements as far as parking spaces as compared to, uh, what's going in. That was not something that David or I administrated on with Old Ringo. Uh, they've moved forward, they, they put that project in. I know part of their concept, you know, moving into the motorcycle was to have, uh, those motorcycles parked inside that facility. Uh, one of the challenges that I and David has, has talked with them about is you've got carbon monoxide that comes along with exhaust. So if you've got a hotel room down there and you've got rooms upstairs, uh, what is your ventilation like to create indoor parking? So that's something that, that he's certainly working back with the owners on. Uh, noise itself, we don't have our noise ordinance queued up, but it is something that police, uh, David Hale and myself are looking at to come behind, uh, point-operated business, uh, short-term rental, and then sexually-oriented business, which we have some of that activity.
Cause all of that noise is transferred all along West Avenue B and 6th Street. It all goes that way.
Right. Yeah, and it's not just motorcycles, it's other cars that modify.
Moving forward, um, I'm generally familiar with the division plan for downtown. It's good. How will that in the future, uh, sort of help to include expansions of, of those in the outline areas of the center of town can also benefit economically? Is there, are they considered a workshops or conferences or seminars or town halls of getting the information out of the vision plan so the other people in the outline areas or civil workforce, et cetera, can also be able to, uh, appreciate and maybe at the same time open their, uh, worldview as to how they might be able to incorporate and benefit from the, from the plan?
Yeah, so one of the things we had done shortly before my departure in 2017 is we had done a workshop roll out. Uh, I think we did here in Civic Center, if I'm not mistaken.
Civic Center, up in Sol Ross.
And, and then, yeah, one up in Sol Ross as well. Uh, just today, I reposted, uh, the city blog, I did some modifications from it, but the city manager blog, uh, showing the vision plan, showing the, uh, the flyover as well. And part of the reason I want to talk about this council meeting is, is to start finding out who's gravitating to wanting to discuss more about and understand. Really the way our wards are set up in the city, uh, every ward has kind of a piece of downtown. Uh, well, not, not every ward does have a piece of downtown. And so, uh, you know, that gives all the council members the opportunity to, you know, pulling constituents, uh, that are interested. I think as well, when we, we look at our planning and zoning, uh, what we're doing there, we have really good planning and zoning commission meeting. Rawls will be here, speak a little bit this evening, uh, about the historic district, uh, which spans a little greater than, than just downtown, but then I think also as we contemplate what a comprehensive plan would look like for Alpine. So we'll talk, uh, more about that. And I know they've scheduled a workshop on the 21st of March that will be advertised and get people to come in. So I think we're really working towards having those, those opportunities.
Or in the future, what would be planned workshops?
Uh, well, the first one is March 21st. Um, we, we are going to, well, Tech Stock has two freight studies, one in Presidio, a meeting in Presidio this week, and then a meeting, uh, on Friday in Fort Stockton. Post the Texas, Southwest Texas Rail Conference, I have been in discussion with Tech Stock about what a bypass, uh, both for truck and rail would look like. Their designee, uh, just sent me a, uh, an output from, well, let's see, it, it's really a document that looks at if you're creating a bypass, uh, what are some of the steps that go through that? And so as we, as we look at from a transportation perspective, we look at from a planning and zoning perspective, we look at from a historic perspective, all these pieces have to work together. So my sense is as we move through 2020, we'll continue to have workshops, uh, that will be available for folks that, that want to come in and attend. And we're really, you, you can't talk about these individually. I mean, you can, but, but collectively, they, they have to come together. So we have to be focused on what's going to happen with, uh, truck traffic as it comes through downtown, right? So when we think about development downtown, it's like Chris Weber from Tech Stock told me last week, he says, you know, I was just out in Fredericksburg, awful place, can't park in the main street getting there. So what, you know, we've got to be thinking about, uh, the longer-term impacts on downtown as well as we talk about transportation, how would the traffic in and out of Alpine? And unfortunately, when, when Tech Stock was doing the Highway 67. And unfortunately, when TechStock was doing the Highway 67 corridor plan, they opted to not include any sort of research or discussion on the bypass. And for whatever reason, they determined that. But I think some of the workshops that happened here in Alpine, that was a large topic of concern. And so we're really working to pivot back into having that discussion about a bypass. Because if it's something that doesn't come to fruition, then we would have to base ourselves for much heavier traffic through downtown Alpine, and the impacts on that. And then you start dispersing more from downtown because of danger of that volume of trucks coming down Holland or going up Avenue B.
Yeah, and we're going on the vision plan. There were, as Eric talked about, there were multiple sessions that occurred actually in here relative to the vision plan. And vision plans are put together, pull the community together. There were some 80 people who participated in both here and up at Salt Ross. And the vision plan included, when you think about downtown, it's all of downtown, including Murphy Street, you know, all the way across over to Holland and Avenue B. So those were all included, all those inputs were put in. That vision plan is out there, available for people to look at. And what's nice is, many organizations use that as a roadmap to say, ah, what's the plan look like? How do we go off and do that? So if you've not had a chance to read it, I recommend you pull it up on the web.
Yeah, I've looked at it. I think there's a lot of people in Ward Two, and I don't know about Ward Four, that might be interested if they knew the availability of the plan to be able to go and review.
It's out there. It's been out there for us since 2016, the reviews, 16, 17, and 18.
But is it being promoted to let people know that it's out there?
Yep, have at it.
Yep.
Actually, a good segue into communications, website updates, PSAs. Working with Gio, I'm going to give Gio a lot of, a lot of props here. He's done a nice job at taking our existing website, and he and I talk quite a bit about how do you make it so that it's centric, so if a citizen comes in and looks at it, or somebody's interested in Alpine, how do they quickly be able to grab news, announcements? If they want to do business with us, where do they go? And if you haven't had a chance to go to the city of Alpine website recently, I would encourage all to go do that and look around a little bit. Some of the other communications that we've worked on is having our directors, that second cup of coffee with Martin Benavich. And we're taking the audio files from all that uploading on the website, so if you're not able to hear, then you can go back and listen to it. Or if you, if you thought you heard Eddie Molinar say something, and you wanted to be sure, you can go back and listen to it again. So we've got that up there. The other thing that we're working on, we know that baseball and softball are huge in our community, working back with the different leagues, how do we get something online from a calendar system that teams know they can come in and make reservations? So we took that concept and spawned it out to both Civic Center, the Pavilion, we'll do it with pool rental for pool parties this weekend, or this summer, and allow people to go online, look at a calendar. This is an example of the Civic Center, and they'll be able to see what dates are booked. So if you're trying to plan a party, and you want to know what day the field or the facility is available, our citizens will be able to go do that. So certainly very excited about that piece of it. I did get the blog started back again, as I mentioned earlier, repurposed some of that material on the vision plan, flyover out there. Just, you know, we've got coffee with city manager, we've got all these different piece parts going, talked to Chief Martin last week. He has committed to having his first coffee with the chief this, this month, the month of March. That's what I have. I think we have this, any questions for me? Otherwise, we've got Ms. Marcy to talk.
Eric, on the stuff that we were just talking about here, when will that show up on the website? Do you know what poll out it's going to be under yet, or when's you going to have it up?
It's, it's out there now.
I'm looking at, that's why I'm looking at, that's why I was raising the question.
Right, so it's on the right side, how do I book a facility?
So there's the how do I, and then, so, but that's, the facility stuff's not out there yet?
It is out there now, yes.
Does it have like the cost for, like booking the civic center or the baseball fields?
No, that's just to give them the availability of what, when it's open for them to reserve.
And we'll, we're also going, Gio's going to upload the applications on there, so you can, you can print it out, fill it out, bring it in, pay Leslie or pay Savvy. The nice thing is, we've got Leslie Mendoza at our visitor's center office, we've got Savvy Portillo here, and those two can work in harmony, because once a reservation and the payment comes in, they just go on the calendar. The two of them and Gio are the only three employees with access to the calendar for right access, and they update it, and it stays very, very updated.
More staff updates?
Marcy.
Hello, hi mayor, hi council. Nice to see you guys up here as the new grant writer for the city of Alpine. This is my first staff report, and I want to apologize to the elected officials and to the public that my presentation is slightly different than what was originally posted in the packet. The packet is parks-focused, and we decided that it was a better strategy to be more comprehensive in reporting to you on all of the grants that we've been working on since I started in mid-January. So the updated slides will be on the website tomorrow, I believe. Okay, so this gentleman here on my first slide has a money tree, which would be awesome if we could have a money tree planted somewhere in Alpine. But until that happens, that's why I've been hired, is to help us maximize the funds that we do have. So as Eric mentioned earlier, my first four grants that I started, you know, started with have been public safety-oriented, so I've been working with Alpine Police Department. Last meeting, council approved four resolutions related to these first listed four grants. So they are for body armor and body cameras. Two have already been submitted, so the first two are for, one is body armor and body cameras, and the next one is for a variety of communication equipment for APD. So those two were submitted last week, and the notification period is quite a while when you're dealing with government funds. We, notification should be in August of 2020, thereabouts. And the next two coming up are actually next week. One is through the U.S. Department of Justice, and that would be requesting funds for two new entry-level officers, at least 75% of their, well, 75% of their salaries. And the other one from Homeland Security, from the Office, OOG is Office of the Governor. I've had to learn a whole new language of acronym since January, but that's Office of the Governor. Anyway, those funds are for overtime hours. And so those are the next two grants. Again, you've already heard and approved those resolutions. And then also in discussion is a grant for more of a community relations program for PD. So that's what we have on the public safety side of things. Those were my first ones to work on when I got here. And then these are, as they were in your packet, I will go over these relatively quickly, the first two perhaps more in-depth. But, so of course, the biggest money tree, if you will, ha ha. Should I wait till it at least stops blowing whistle? Okay. For parks is, of course, Texas Parks and Wildlife, and they actually do have some federal dollars to funnel through the state agency. So, our grants that are available for parks include a small community recreation grant, and that's a 50/50 match for very small communities. So that is for places, you know, less than 20,000 population. And then there is a slightly larger, well, there's a much larger pool of money that they consider non-urban recreation areas, and those are for communities less than 500,000. So it's a much larger pool of applicants, but it's also a larger dollar amount. So if we have a bigger project that we're considering that we need funding for, we are eligible to apply there, and perhaps that might actually be the best one. I have spoken with Texas Parks and Wildlife staff, and, you know, as we progress down, potentially applying for some of these, you know, we can, strategies will become more clear. But overall, there are two grants that we are eligible for, for parks funding, through Texas Parks and Wildlife. Grants for trails, again, Parks and Wildlife. And this is an annual match, I'm sorry, this is an annual program, and it's an 80/20 match. This is actually the largest percentage of funds towards a project that Parks and Wildlife does. Most of them are 50/50. So that means Texas Parks and Wildlife will fund 80% of a project, and the city only has to pay 20. And now Alpine is in the exceptional situation where we actually have funds from ETP earmarked for trails. So we could go after, if we wanted to phase a larger trail vision project, we could, you know, apply three or however many years in a row, doling out the money that we have, asking Parks and Wildlife for an 80% match. So there's a pretty strong positive opportunity for these trails grants coming up. And their deadline is always February 1st. So we have missed one this year, the next one won't be until 2021. But that gives us time to strategize and prioritize to make sure we're in it for next Grants for recreation buildings, there are funds for that, there, it's a 50/50 match, and buildings are a lot of money, whether you are retrofitting or building new, but there are funds for that. And there are grants for...
What are those funds?
Um, do they, I have a...
Recreation buildings?
Right. You mean, are they federal funds that are, bills are down from Parks and Wildlife? I'm honestly not sure. I would have to check the Parks and Wildlife status.
But it's Parks and Wildlife.
Yes, it's still Parks and Wildlife, right, yes. And same for programming, it's also a Parks and Wildlife grant. These are much smaller awards, but again, it's for programming. And while I think Alpine definitely could benefit from some of these, it requires staffing in place, or at least some idea of how, you know, how they would be managed and sustained the programming side of things, which I, you know, right now, we are not there, but as Alpine gets there, you know, longer term, definitely could be a possibility. And the things to consider for future projects, whether they be funded through Texas Parks and Wildlife, or through the Department of Justice for public safety grants. All grants require adopting a resolution by council, as you all saw at the last meeting, and adopted four in a row. So don't be surprised if you get more that are attached to funding. It is a requirement, whether it's a private foundation or the Department of Justice. They want to know that the city, somebody, you know, with the governing body at the city has said, yes, we take responsibility for these funds, to use them correctly. And if we don't use them correctly, or don't use, or don't use them at all, we will give them back. I mean, that's, that's just a straight requirement. So hopefully, we'll see more of those as we submit more grants. Something to think about as we consider funding opportunities in the future, a city's match, as we talk about 80/20 match, or 50/50 match, match can include volunteer efforts within the city. Honestly, it could also include, Eric, I was thinking this as you were showing the pictures of the creek that we were already greeting, to go, that could have counted as a match towards one of those trail grants, because it's work on or towards those projects. Okay? And then partnership strength and applications. So I know that a lot of you bring a lot of partnerships and a lot of history in Alpine to the table. And things like the Parks Nonprofit, or even, you know, connections within the county, or the university, or the school district, all of those are partnerships. And government grants and private grants, both, really like it when they're not the only one footing the bill for something. So please, you know, as we think about projects, that's a sort of a community effort in bringing partnerships to the table. Like I mentioned before, projects can be phased, and always need to consider the need, you know, of the project and the timeframe. Even short-term projects tend to take at least two years from the time the application is the bid. So, and then the rest of this is very tiny print that I really cannot read from here at all. This is my grant matrix, as I call it, where I am tracking and following and making notes about who the funder is, when their deadline is, what the award is, what might we possibly, you know, be able to fund with it, et cetera. So, and there's four pages of that. And again, this will be in the presentation notes online. This is my working document, and I believe the intent is for Eric and Megan and I to come back to council during the budget process for fiscal year 21, with a smaller, more targeted version of my giant matrix, to talk about, okay, these are things that are reasonable and feasible for the community. Council, what do you all think are our priorities? Because we have to set aside funds if there is an 80/20 match, we have to put, you know, aside that money. So anyway, that's where I'm going, that's what I've been doing for the last two months. And are there any questions? Yes, ma'am.
And you're talking about the program funding, I was wondering, could something like that go towards programing programs for the Alpine Public Library? Or is it just things like you guys would do for the city?
That's tricky, the answer, my gut answer is for the city. Could be in partnership with something from the library, yes. But because of the distinction of the Alpine being separate from the city, it would have to be more partnership than direct funds.
Maria, one of the questions that Don, Wetterhour, or every year when Don goes through, it's one of his major grants, he uses the monies that come from the city to show that city correlation to it. And one of the questions is always, do we feel like this will continue on in future years? Of course, I understand there's no guarantee, because from one council to the next, that could change, but they do look at the monies that are coming from the city, and he uses that to try to match to get more dollars. I know that for sure.
Any other questions? Great.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Well, she's trying to spend it, and I'm going to try and save it. So, I can say right now, I cannot read the screen, so I'm going to find out. Um, so for March, we're still in the audit. Don't let you forget, it's set to complete, of course, by the end of March, we're required by the state to have it completed by March 31st. So we're looking at possibly having a special meeting for the council to be able to review and adopt the audit. They will have it prepared ahead of time, so that we can get it to you, so if you have any questions. Eric is diligently working on the MDNA, really relieved and excited. Love doing it for those few years, but love giving it over to the main person there. So every day, just emails back and forth, providing documentation, anything they need, we get it to them. So the finance department, we have had one busy month, our daily operations has increased. We have had a significant increase in the number of purchase orders and invoices being processed. This is a good time to get prepared for upcoming projects. When the weather gets warmer, we tend to have our field guys out in the field more, unlike today where it's nice and cold and wet. It makes it kind of a miserable environment to work. We also see a decline in our property tax. Everyone here has paid by February 29th, I'm so excited, I'm guessing. February 29th was the last day to submit before you got penalized, so we see a significant drop in our property taxes, because the majority of individuals have already paid. We continue to work on our assets and inventory. We're looking at having that disposal list prepared by March 31st, so that the first meeting in April, we can get that to council, see how we're going to switch things up, make it more transparent, clean, understandable. We do have a form, Abel has been gracious.
We do have a form. Abel has been gracious, well, he's been told, to go to the different departments and start recording what they have as far as assets and inventory. So we can do a more in-depth look at what the city actually owns. He's currently working with the visitor center and the airport. And then of course, the larger departments, your water, your gas, will be towards the end. Our grant policy and purchasing policy, we're hoping to have rough drafts. So they go hand in hand, which is the hard part. The grant policy references the purchase policy. Without the purchase policy, you can't have the grant policy. We're required to have both. So it's making sure that everything matches in addition to all the other policies the city has passed, including our fiscal policy, our budget policy, our cash management policy. The list can go on. So we're just trying to make sure everything lines up and doesn't contradict one another. So it's a little, little longer than, than I thought it would take. And I am so not clicking through. I'm so sorry, guys. Okay, so investing. Conference was great. It confirmed what I thought I knew. It's always a bonus. And the city, for the first time, truly has the ability to invest without worrying about having to pull it out. So our investing right now are reserve accounts. These are on-demand accounts that allows us basically to put money in and the next day to take it right back out. True investing would be putting it into something like a CD, a mutual fund, commercial paper, a bond. And actually having it right out to collect that interest, to collect those payments and actually building up additional investments or using it for specific projects. The city hasn't really had that ability. I don't know if it did prior to me as well. It doesn't seem like it going through the records that I have access to. So this is a really positive note for the city. We are in the black. We have a fund balance. We have a cash flow. It's exciting. I don't worry about making payments day-to-day. I'm begging vendors to submit their invoices or payment. Never thought I'd have to do that. So for the first quarter of 1920, which is of course October through December, I'm just gonna give you the bullet points here. So this is for the entire quarter. The city has the beginning investment of 1.288 million. At the end of the first quarter, we had 1.294 million. Some of that has been dedicated by council, which is further on my report to kind of have that go back in review and talk. Our interest rates vary between 1.5 and 2.2%. I provide you the interest rate at the last day of that month of December. So it was 1.88 and 1.564. For those of you who love numbers, that is a huge thing for interest rates. In 2008, they dropped significantly. So now that we have like almost 2% or sometimes 2%, it's exciting. My savings account is only 1%. So it's exciting to see those go up. Most of what we collect, of course, is in interest. We haven't made any deposits and we haven't pulled any money out. That is also super exciting. So that's just give you kind of a snap. So now we go into actually saving and investing. So in your packets, I broke down each of the reserve accounts because the council did dedicate us to specific departments and projects. And kind of looking at where we are currently, this is a short-term solution to the priorities and needs of the city currently. And we have the ability to move forward. We have the ability to address what's currently going on. Utilizing some of our reserves, but also taking into consideration that the next time I actually get to meet with you, I'm hoping to look at the long term. Utilizing our short-term would be utilizing the reserves. Brief reminder. Our financial policy that was adopted by council last year indicated how much the different departments should, our funds should be reserving. So you had the general fund at 10%, water, wastewater and sanitation at 15%. Gas fund at 15%, airport fund at 10% and hot fund at 2%. This is the 10%, 15% or 2% of their regular operating revenue. So if you took the budget, you looked at what their operating was, you would put in roughly 10% and 15% into a reserve account. The city did initially set up the first year and encumbered those reserves. This year, with the change in budget and updating and looking at the priorities of the city, we did not. The policy does say that if these funds are available, so if the city ever had a hiccup and needed to, to make an adjustment to the budget or to not budget it for the year, they have the availability. This is all set by council. So, this is the beautiful slide. So today, where are we at? So today we have a total, total reserves of 1.294 million dollars. We have total cash accounts of 7.392 million. This is money sitting in our checking accounts that's used for day-to-day operations. This is money that we can also move for additional long-term investing. The exciting part is, this is the first time in a very long time. When I started, the general fund had 100,000 and our payroll around about 70,000. And then you still had your bills. So this is a huge, huge change. After separating funds, focusing on clear and understandable transparency and just knowing where the money was coming and going, this is the end result. And moving forward, we're gonna grow. Our total budget for this year after amendment is 13.36 million. And based on the average reserve percentage, so if you took all of the reserved amounts, divided them, or the percentages and divided it, you get roughly 10%. So the city should have 1.336 million in reserve. We are short based on that policy, but only 42,000. And that's reserve. That, that, that's money set aside. That's not what we're using for our day-to-day. So, now we get into our priorities. So this past year, I know council, Eric, all the departments have sat down and said, this is what we really need to move forward. These are our concerns. These are our issues. These are your constituents coming to you and saying, I'm tired of going over that pothole on such and such street.
No, don't worry.
So, the number one priority is road improvement. The council approved this street study that involved, or actually had an action plan. It provided your, your critical streets to your, you don't have to worry about them right away streets. Eddie took that, kind of prioritized it, worked with Eric, figured out what the best process moving forward, not only realistically, but feasibly. I mean, we all wish we could do the whole entire city over at once, but we know it's not feasible and it's not realistic. The second main department that's come up repeatedly over the past several months, past year, is the water and wastewater infrastructure. You've seen the cones all over town. Not only is it improving the infrastructure, but it's also fixing what we currently have in the ground. One of the things that the city is always addressing are our TCQ enforcement. TCQ comes in and kind of gives us a slap on the wrist and says, you need to do better, but it usually comes with a price tag. So that vacuum truck would help the water department, especially with all of these ongoing projects. Water taps, sewer taps, water leaks. It really is a tool that the department could utilize and move forward. Cut down on expenses of labor, the time it takes. It really just helps the department do their job better. Our water wells, they need to be maintained. We all see them all over town. We know that that's where our drinking water is stored, but we also need to maintain them. Over time, they do start to have issues and we're seeing that a little bit here more lately. And we wanna just jump ahead of it now instead of having to replace the whole tank. So 100,000 now, 150,000 now compared to a million later. So we're trying to look at that preventative side as well. And then the airport. It's only on my priority list because we have dedicated the city to doing a lighting project. I'm ecstatic because the number one issue is if we lose that lighting system out at the airport, which we are now the only airport on it. It is the oldest lighting system. You don't have planes coming in and out. I know that some people think, well, the airport is just certain people. But if you've ever had a medical emergency, personally my mom, they need to be able to come in and out. Doesn't matter what time of day or night. And so it becomes a big safety issue. So we just wanna get ahead of that. We're on the list. You guys have approved us to move forward with it. It's a two-year project, planning and then, planning, engineering and then construction. So I went ahead and added it on the list because it is already been dedicated and something that needs to be budgeted and planned for moving forward. So the next few slides, anytime you have questions, please don't hesitate. The next few slides kind of give you an idea of where I'm looking at recommending for the short-term based on our priorities. So the capital improvements in the street department. We're looking at doing this over a two-year period. The numbers come from an RFP that was submitted, so we have to have a place to start. Where do you start? You send out a request and ask people, hey, tell us what it's gonna cost. So we did get some information back. I utilize this as the starting point to be able to say, this is what we're gonna look at short-term and long-term to be able to start fixing our roads. So the priority list is broken down based on the needs through the street department, visiting with Eric, the study, the survey that they did. And each one is categorized. So they're listed in need order. You have year one and year two. You're looking at either a full rehab or we just start over. Pull it all up and start from scratch. Or you're looking at a rehab where we're going in and reinforcing and the base is good, but we're not gonna have to replace it. So it's a little bit different in price, a little bit less. So I broke down every section so that you guys would have it. This will be online and I'm more than happy to email it to you as well if you want it for instantly after this meeting. And then, there's eight main sections. And then the biggest sections are year one, or the most expensive section, I should say. And then the second year is slightly less. So I total it up for you. Year one total cost is 1.009 million dollars. So that addresses your alleys between East Avenue Holland, third, fourth, fifth, sixth, seventh, eighth sections between E, East Avenue E and East Holland and West Holland and West Avenue E. So our alleys need some help. If you've ever had to go down one of them, you've seen, they get used more for anything. And the second part of that is the parking lots. When you come to Hayter Waterville, all those lovely holes up front, we'll be getting those fixed. The old city hall where your water department, your police department, your sheriff utilizes that as well. That would be fixed. The civic center and then the visitor center. So the general fund would be providing 970,297 of that. And the hot fund would be providing 39,700. Because the tourism center, the visitor center is under the hot account, their maintenance improvements would come out of their funds. So this is set aside. Year two, which on the list is a lot of streets. Everywhere from Eagle Pass to North 12th to Hancock to North Orange. Quincy, Uvalde, Del Rio, Marfa. I know I didn't get them all. There's a lot. Would be 831,694. The general fund would be responsible for all of it. So that gives you kind of the idea of how to address priority one, road improvements. This is what, two years to get back on track. This does not include the steel coating project either. This is just to fully replace or rehab what is being listed. We still have a $500,000 seal coat program. Seal coat actually goes in and fixes the roads, maintains them for at least another seven to 10 years. So this is in addition to. So we're not giving everything over to having this come in and someone fix it. No, this is to go hand in hand. So we're covering double the, the footage. We wanna make sure that we hit this from every angle possible so that, I mean, everyone can see, you know, we're, the council, the city is dedicated to getting back on track. Any questions?
Yes, Katie. Year one, we're looking at 2020 or is it 2018, 2020?
This year, 2021. So either you may be up until September.
So next year, 2021.
So in your packets, you actually have each reserve account broken down with recommendations. These are the highlights of that to kind of help narrow down all the verbiage. So our parks projects. Eric did an excellent job about explaining, you know, we've got the creek project. We've got all these improvements. She's finding ways to pay for them that doesn't cost the city the full amount. So everyone kind of is working hand in hand with this one. The city council also approved a master park plan. So as part of that master park plan, it's now sitting down and saying, okay, great plan, how do we move forward with it? So as Eric pointed out, so public works has done all the work on the creeks. That is tearing everything out, blading it, cleaning it. And this hasn't happened just once or twice. This has been happening for some time. They initiated the routine maintenance several years ago. In 1920, this fiscal year, you've noticed, like Eric showed you the pictures, they've gone in and just completely cleared them out. It's really nice to be able to know that the water's gonna flow and not back up. So my recommendation is reimbursing the public works for the maintenance and work on these creeks. The money is set aside in one of the reserve accounts for the creek project. Utilizing a part of those funds to go back to the parks in our public works department and then repurposing it for, because it's, it's a revenue source, but then utilizing it for the splash pad. So the one thing that it's been repeatedly brought up is, you know, the city, we want a splash pad. We need something for our community, for the kids. You know, it's a little bit more cost-effective than the pool. The pool does have, you know, its ups and downs. But this would give us the seed money to kind of move forward with that while Marcy figures out the rest. Along with the Big Ben Parks Association?
Parks and Rec for Kids, yeah.
The Pueblo Nuevo project. They've been working, the parks board has been working really hard. Kind of redesigning it, resetting it up. They've come up with a plan. They, you know, they wanna invest in this park so that more people can enjoy it. We're looking at budgeting 175,000 for next year. It would be the seed money to get the project started. And then the remainder would be funded by the grants. So this is, I'm just throwing it out there now so that as we move into, I mean, we're in March. As we move into the budget process, people need to be aware of where we stand, what we have available and how do we wanna either earmark what we have or how do we wanna budget and move lead for the next year. My favorite, budget amendments. So, we're looking at having some to present on March 17th and March 25th. These are basically the recommendations that I provided to you in regards to our different reserve accounts. Those would be amendments. They would be changing how the revenue, I'm trying, how the reserve money is being handled, coming back onto the city. The water department set aside a huge chunk of their reserve account for specific projects, as I explained in the packet. Those projects were completed with day-to-day operation funds. So there's no need to hold on to it as a reserve. The project's done. It's been earmarked and there's, we need to reallocate it to some of the other priorities. I broke it down with the TCQ, the vacuum truck, the wells. I know on a day-to-day basis, I get those invoices from some of those companies and they need some help. So reallocating those funds would greatly help them. Also, I made some recommendations on wordifying the funds for the road improvements. It is utilizing some of the reserves we currently have, but we did encumber all of the reserves that should have been moved last year. They roll over into a fund balance or a net position. So now, let's just basically say, okay, we're not gonna have this big pot unrestricted. Let's, let's put it to something we can use. So there is the recommendation on how to break it out. So there is the recommendation on how to break it out to be able to cover that expense. The other recommendation, of course, is with the creek project to allocate some of those reserves back into the general fund so that they can utilize them for the splash pad. And then, of course, moving forward, I will have a presentation for you on our cash flow and understanding that we don't need to leave it sitting where it's at, it's the safest choice, everyone will always agree it's the safest place to put it, even in your checking account, but we don't need to have large sums, I say large sums, but we don't need to have those funds sitting there when we can properly invest them and actually start giving something back for them. We don't collect very much interest in a checking account or a basic savings account. We need to actually look at putting it into a rolling CD or something that's just going to give us a little something back so that we can start being able to sustain the city moving forward. My big goal, council may not want to hear this, I'd love to be debt-free. I would love for the city to be able to be debt-free, have a reserve, and when we need to fully go out for a huge project with the water development board, it's, here's the cash. I know cities who do it, I know cities who have been in the same position that Alpine's been in, we have very little revenue resources, there's not a lot of places for us to get the money, but they've done it and I know we can too. So. Long presentation, but super exciting for me, big changes, looking forward to it and if you have questions, be more than happy to answer.
You expect to be there. So, one, you talked about a date of meeting on March twenty-fifth. When will that get finalized or should we make that decision tonight? Because it sounds like there's at least one, possibly two things to work. One is the audit, and the other is potential budget amendment. So what's the plan, twenty-fifth?
We would like the twenty-fifth.
Okay, do we want to just all say yay very early on the twenty-fifth, so you all can plan accordingly, and what time will that be?
What time would council like? Same time by three?
Because that's a Wednesday, as I recall, not a Tuesday.
Cynthia Salas will get a special meeting to the mayor, and the mayor can then sign off on it.
Second question, you went through a lot of elements on where we are from a budget amendment standpoint, by the way, great job kind of racking, stacking all that together so we have a good picture. Phenomenal reserve position and a great cash position, even though that lot of cash isn't just available, we don't spend, it gets spent, but nice to see you keep track of all that. The million dollar, this is the first time, as I recall, seeing what's coming from the outside for millions of million dollars. Is that part of the thirteen point, roughly four million dollar budget, or that's got to be something, so some of that, I know we added to the budget, I thought, close to what, seven, eight hundred thousand, Eric?
Right.
Okay, so it's a need for another couple hundred thousand dollars, so it's not a big item.
No, this is on top.
It's on top of?
This is on top of.
This is where the seal coat project gets what's budgeted, the five hundred little plus.
Right.
This is in addition to, so the recommendation is to move some of the reserves.
Right.
Some of the encumbered reserves and equity transfers to be able to do the project.
Okay, okay, so you'll walk through all that when we look at the budget amendment to kind of show it's going from here over to here, here's what's left in the reserves, here's what's in the fund balance, here's all that sorts out.
Yes.
Okay. Second question, this is more of Eric's question. It looks like of the one point eight million dollars from outside to new streets, there are two really different priorities. One is to do alleyways, visitor center, and city parking lots. The other is to do streets. One happens, proposed this year, the other happens next year. It looks like you're doing in favor of the alley and the parking lots this year, waiting another year for the streets. And I'm just wondering kind of what the thought process was to kind of come to that conclusion because many citizens are looking and saying, okay, we're doing the seal coat and all that stuff, that's going to help a lot. What was the rationale for doing one over the other first?
So, when Eddie and I sat down and looked at the different sections and said, what do we really need to do first, where are we the most vulnerable? We were very concerned about the infrastructure in the alleys because, well, there's multiple things going on, and certainly we've got a lot of, you know, called water, sewer, gas infrastructure in there, but we also have a lot of activity with the murals and the movement of people down in that area. So that was the driving factor, plus we also wanted to get the toughest project out of the way first, that would be the toughest one to complete. And then the other part, the second part on the parking lots, we've civic center, city hall, two of the biggest areas used in the city for all people all around the city and the community, so we wanted to help give a better experience there. The visitor center was actually approved by council in the twenty sixteen, twenty seventeen, never got done. We do know we have parking issue downtown, and so we thought by adding twenty-four spots downtown as quickly as possible, that would be helpful. All the while Eddie's, at five hundred thousand, Eddie actually can get closer to a hundred and fifty block seal coating, so then this fiscal year that pushes him to get real aggressive to try to get that hundred and fifty block seal coating. And so that was, that was where he and I talked, and then we took the remaining six sections and just looked at which ones were the roughest and just prioritized them.
Yeah, my sense is that makes sense, I think helping when you articulate that and helping people see the rationale, they say, ah, I got it. Because, you know, we all get the Pablo list that comes rolling, and I've got another list here yesterday, I sent over to you. And so, the more Eddie can do to put up and say, okay, instead of a hundred, it's going to be a hundred and fifty blocks we're seal coating this next year, here's where they're at, I think people would, it really makes, makes good sense.
Because we'll start, I mean, they're already starting to prep the streets, so we'll be seal coating April of this year. You know, a lot of folks generally don't always understand the difference between a full rebuild and a seal coat, so they see us scrape the street, fill the potholes, and put a new top on it, they think we've redone the street, when we really only just seal coated it. And so I think experientially in the community, with fifteen percent of the blocks getting seal coated this year, people will feel that and see that and get excited about it.
Good, great, thanks. Thanks, Megan. Oh, I'm sorry, I have one last question on my note here, because I have my own looking. Some of the contracts that exist, like the one with Park Hill Smith and Cooper, that we contracted them to go do a rate study, did any of that work ever get done?
So I know Eric's been having lovely conversations with them. So, history council, you guys approved it in February of two thousand and nineteen, that contract wasn't signed until June of two thousand and nineteen, it didn't address what the RFP was. I know that they've been trying to bill, I did not see any paperwork, documentation, GIS, they're supposed to map out all the infrastructure. It's on the list of recommendations, council truly needs to review that, it's a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. I don't believe they've met any of the requirements, and if we can get out of it and pay only a small portion, the contract does specifically say a loan sum of a hundred and fifty, so this billing now is against the contract, but I truly urge you guys to read it over, I did include it in the packet, and take a look and reevaluate, you know, is it something we need at this point, or do we need to put out the bigger fires and then come back?
Park Hill has tendered us a bill of twenty-seven thousand dollars. I have reached back to them no less than three times asking for output from them to justify it. I sent them actually another email today to set up a call because I got a somewhat of a flippant email that said, are y'all ever going to pay your invoice? And so I set it up the chain and just said, look, let's have a call, and let's determine what it is, what work you did. If the city had contracted you to work and you did honest work, and you have some output from it that you can provide, then we'll certainly tender payment, but I have not seen anything from them as far as output from it. So, you know, Megan and I talked about it, and Scott, Perry, and Megan and I have all talked about it, we just assumed, cancel that contract and move forward. You know, the rate study, quite frankly, TML does a rate study every year, it's part of our membership due, so why would we go pay somebody else to do rate study? I don't get that.
And this contract doesn't include the rate study, so it's the assessment, but the money has to be the assessment and the rate study, because the contract's.
Part of the reason I raise it, I think if you go back and look at council meeting minutes during the summertime, when this issue came up and I specifically asked the question, do we have an obligation to pay the contract, the answer was, no, we do not, because they've not done the work associated with it. So my reaction is, you know, something, it's administrative, you and Rodney will sort all that out, but I don't know whatever makes good businesses, but they've not done the work, and it's supposed to be a loan sum, keep that money and put it back in the pocket if we're using it. Thank you.
Okay, we'll move on to public hearings. Public hearings obtained citizen meeting that are in accordance with twenty twenty dash oh two oh four, establishing the regulation of scale or pressure point operated machines established, providing definition, establishing authority to enforce, providing penalty clause, providing for several penalty clauses, and providing the publication. Anyone want to talk about it? Okay, we'll move on. I guess you comes up.
I'm just curious, during the first meeting, there was a notice there, there were three locations and...
So this is the point of order, this is not the opposite, for us to talk about this, this is public hearing, we have plenty of time to ask questions when we get to your business.
Okay, let's move on to consent agenda. Minutes, financials, reports, department reports, board appointments. Notice to the public, upon items of routine administrative nature, the council has been furnished with background and support material on each item and/or has been discussed at a previous meeting. All items will be acted upon by one vote without being discussed separately unless requested by council member, in which an item or items will be immediately withdrawn for individual consideration in its normal sequence after the items not requiring separate discussion or determined upon. The remaining items will be acted upon by city manager.
Honorable mayor, city council, we do have two items on the consent agenda tonight. First is the approval of minutes from the state council meeting on February eighteenth, twenty twenty, and the second is the approval of the music advisory board, the musician, venue, events, educator, seven individuals are listed on the agenda.
Mr. Mayor, I'm hoping you approve the consent agenda as ready.
Is there a second?
I have a second.
Any discussion? Any discussion? See none? Oh, those in favor, raise your hand. Those opposed, rock, sign motion, careless. Okay, information or discussion items, and I'll turn this over to Councilman Curry.
I'm going to have an update on the historic district from planning and zoning, Dennis Foley and Paul Williams.
Good evening, thanks for inviting me. I appreciate everybody's time. I'll try to keep it really brief because I don't really have a whole module of lore, except for the fact that I think the plan and zoning committee is ready to take on the historical district and figure out where we should move forward. Here's a, what I'd like to do is just really quickly run through a little bit of background for everybody on the Alpine Historic District. The original study was initiated in November two thousand and two. I haven't been able to find a copy of this historic resources survey of South Alpine, but I'm assuming that the board initiated, that means it was never completed, and so I don't know that that document actually exists. It's kind of hard to read, these are notes from the plan and zoning on here will help a little bit, but it's just mostly bullet points. It's actually, am I controlling? Just go to the map, that's cool, go to the map of Alpine. So, this is the most current rendition of the historic district in Alpine. It's almost impossible to read, bear with me here. Yeah. I think it was done probably at the Crystal Bar. I'm just kidding, but there's omen and ads, and you'll notice over here, there's a whole lot of sleek little lines, and it's really not that much easier to read it in person than it was for. Okay, these red dots were identified as fifty-one locations of historic interest, but there's absolutely no documentation to go with, that's a really nice house over there, we should put that one on here, oh, this is my house over here, we should put that one on there. So there's really no supporting documentation with the map, more with the ordinance of by these fifty-one structures are significant. In two thousand and eight, there was a working group, and then basically in twenty-ten, PNC set these boundaries, and twenty-eleven, Mary Jerry Johnson and Mr. Patton was actually involved in the process back then, that was when the ordinance was...